If you would mind, I need your two-minute opening statement, please.
It's working. My name is Beth Foster and I was born and raised in Franklin County. I went to Brookville High School, so that tells you how old I am. And then I also taught at Brookville High School. And then I went to Franklin County to teach. I have, my husband and I have raised our two children here. They came back to this county to raise their families. When I went to Indianapolis for one year and we said, mm-hmm, we're going back home. So this is where we've been. We love Franklin County. There are, everybody that comes to Franklin County always says, I just can't believe everybody's so friendly. And that is just the way Franklin County is. After college, I did come back. I have been a coach in the system. I was in education for 33 years. In seven years, I was athletic director, so I've kind of seen all the things that go on in the school system. As I was athletic director, I also had to have a lot of administrative duties, which I wasn't really prepared for that. But you know, you get thrown to the fire and either burn up or go. So I felt like I was successful. Then after I retired, I still felt I still had something to give to Franklin County. And that's when I first had this wild idea that I would run for school board. I feel like it's been one of the best things that I have done. I still want to give to Franklin County children. Even though we are a poor county, our children need everything that we can get from them to get an advantage, to go on and do a career or go on and get an education. And a lot of big schools, thank you.
All right, just honing in, I know you're shy. Thank you, Ms. Foster. And who drew number four? All right.
Brandy Wilson.
Brandy, please give us your opening statement.
Hi, I am Brandy Wilson. My maiden name is Cruda. I am from Franklin County, born and raised here. My grandparents are from Franklin County. And my husband Chad Wilson and I decided that we were also going to raise our three children here. I have Brandon, who has recently graduated from Franklin County High School. I have Aiden Wilson, who is my middle son. He's actually my baby forever. He is diagnosed with Creutzfeldt syndrome, so special education is very important to me. My daughter Madeline Wilson is a freshman at Franklin County High School and is very active in sports and does very well in academics. God has been good to me. My husband and I attend Metamora Church of God. And we also have a ministry called Better Days Through Jesus Christ. Our ministry deals with people who have recently been incarcerated or struggled from addiction. So understanding that children come from broken homes, my heart is with them and I understand. I currently am the vice president and emergency preparedness disaster coordinator at Remedy Home Healthcare, which is located in Brookville on Main Street. And we service about 100 patients within Brookville. I love our community. I think it's the best. I went to school here and I want my children and everyone else's children to have the same experience that I had while I was here. I have lots of great ideas for our school and helping it to become a better place. And I promise that I will pray before each meeting.
I did hear that time. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Who drew number five? Please introduce yourself and give your two-minute statement.
I thought it would be fifth. Okay.
Two and three more here, so lucky.
My name is Mary Kett and I was not born in Franklin County. I was born in Calhoun County in Cleveland, Ohio. Matt and I moved to Brookville back in 1989 when I was pregnant with number six. First and foremost, I decided to run for Franklin County School Board because I think God wanted me to. I don't know if that's the case, but here I am. I love children. I have had eight of my own, 22 grandchildren and counting. So I have a lot of experience with children, with education. I homeschooled eight, my eight children through various stages of their education. Six of them graduated from Franklin County High School. The experience of homeschooling gave me a deep respect for teachers in the classroom setting. There were many excellent teachers and staff members that taught and exemplified character, exemplified fine character formation as well as excellence in their respective fields. For this, I am truly grateful. My parents were my greatest influencers. My devout mother instilled in me the greatest of gifts, the knowledge that I am known and loved by my heavenly Father, saved by His Son Jesus Christ, and sanctified by the Holy Spirit. Secondly, as a first-generation American, whose father at age 13 hid in caves and fled Estonia as Stalin's communist red army committed their hideous crimes of genocide and deicide, I was raised forever to be grateful for being raised in our beloved country with our bounteous freedoms. My father would never let us forget, nor should we. On a side note, Matt and I attended the last school board meeting. There was a lengthy presentation and discussion about Franklin County School Corporation. Oh my gosh, that was so fun.
You'll have more time to talk. Who drew number six? Please introduce yourself and give your two-minute opening statement.
I think it's just seven.
Oh, seven.
Six. Oh, sorry, not six. It would be seven, yeah. I have six up here.
Hello, and thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and taking part in this great democratic process that so many have fought and died for. My name is Kevin Kaiser. I am a local small business owner of a life and health insurance and financial planning agency. I've been involved in multiple sports and youth programs since my daughter was in kindergarten, as well as coaching at the varsity level here in Franklin County. In fact, my daughter is playing her last regular season volleyball game right now. I hate that I'm missing it, but I'm sure she understands why I'm here. My family, my wife Ashley Kaiser is a local hairdresser in Metamora, the presumed boss of the family. My daughter Bailey, who thinks she's the boss, is a sophomore currently here at Franklin County High School. And then there's the one that actually is the boss, my son Declan, five-year-old, currently a kindergartner at Brookville Elementary School. We've just come out of one of the most oppressive times in our country. My job as the next school board member is to ensure that us as parents, but more importantly, our kids do not have to go through that again. The fight to keep critical race theory out of our schools, mask mandates, vaccine guidelines that were forced upon our young kids, truly one of the saddest things I've ever seen as a parent. A lot of our kids have suffered because of the lack of instruction as well as social interaction, and that's going to stick with them for years. And that's something that they're going, some, a lot, will struggle to overcome. My family has been a lifelong resident of Franklin County. And I'm here to be your next school board member to fight for you, your family, and all of the children of the school corporation. To make sure that every single kid is well-educated and well-prepared for their future. Thank you, and I look forward to addressing everyone's questions and concerns.
And who drew number eight? Drew yourself and give your three-minute opening statement, please, sir.
Hello, my name is Terry Bryant. And like Mrs. Kett, I was not born here. I chose to come here. I started my career in teaching in Franklin County 50 years ago. My wife and I came here and I started teaching at a little school called Whitewater. And have since taught at Laurel and Brookville Middle School and the high school. My wife and I, when we first came here, said, okay, we'll be here and we'll just stay here until we find someplace we like better. We chose to stay here for 50 years because we have a county place we like better. This has been a great place to raise our three kids, one of which is a teacher at Franklin County High School. Like I said, I was a privilege to teach in your schools for 43 years. And having done so, I felt an obligation to, after retiring, to continue with that. And somebody asked me what my public service is, and I consider my public service to be on this school board. I want the best education possible for Franklin County kids. I know some of you personally because either I had you in class or I had your children in class. And over the years, that has been my life, to be involved with your kids. I coached football. I coached girls' and boys' basketball. I coached chess. And I, again, would appreciate staying on the school board. I have mentioned to the superintendent, who I spoke to for our program today, that I want this to be a safe place where parents feel like they can bring their kids to our school and get a basic good education.
All right, and one more there. The person drew number 10. I think we have one left.
Good evening. My name is Adrienne Green and I was a graduate of Brookville High School in 1985. And I grew up in Seagrove, so I'm very familiar with Franklin County. Like Mr. Evans over here, we were in the same church for a while. I felt the need to throw my hat and ring to be a part of any process that's taking care of our children and our county and our way of life as it's slipping away from us in the government that we're looking at right now and the problems. I'm probably voting for this man over here. I agree with everything he said in the blue shirt. I pastor two churches right now, Johnson Fork Road, all the churches on Johnson Fork Road. And I take care of the spiritual needs of about 60 families. A pastor of a church is basically a CEO of a spiritual organization. And so in terms of what it takes to look at budgets and work with people as a team and make tough decisions and solve problems, that would be something that I'm already doing and used to. I have a master's degree in organizational leadership, which has helped me in my work. And I got that degree because at the time, I was the dean of students at Antonelli College in downtown Cincinnati. So my approach is academic, but I'm also a hometown girl and have the skills and administrative ideas and experience to work with a school board. I too am very upset with some of the things that are coming at our children and our communities and our families. The critical race theory, the mask mandates, the vaccine requirements, and on and on. As we all know, if you're understanding what's happening in this country, it is an ongoing situation. They are not pleased with the Christian community and the conservative community.
Right, we have one minute. We need to go on the data. So introduce yourself, sir, and give us your two-minute opening statement, please.
All right, well, I apologize for being late. My name is Scott McDonough. I'm currently serving on county council. That term's coming to an end. And I was looking around to see what other opportunities were to continue to serve the community. And the school board came to my attention. As soon as I have six kids that are currently in the community schools, it's an institution that's close and dear to my heart. So I'd say my main reason for stepping in the ring is just I want to do whatever I can to improve the quality of the education that we're offering to all the residents in the county. As far as my qualifications, I've been involved in this county for well over 10 years. I had different and different political functions, from county commissioner to serving on economic development, to currently the county council. I've served on park boards. And I got to know a lot of people. I've made a lot of friends around this county and had a lot of good conversations. So I'm very invested in the future of the county and where it goes. And our kids are the ultimate future of this county. And I want to do whatever I can to give them the best footwork we can.
In an effort to keep everybody engaged, I don't think we want to reverse the order with some of the candidates in this round. We're going to go ahead and keep that same order. And so our first question will go to Beth Foster, one of the incumbents we have here on the case tonight. Two minutes to answer the question, just to recap in case anyone wasn't here. Question number one will be the same for each of our incumbent candidates and the same for each of our non-incumbent candidates. What specifically have you done to improve public education in Franklin County?
Well, the past eight years, we have had many things to consider. We've had many obstacles. Our state legislature and the federal government has defunded a lot of things, and that includes schools. So on a lot of things, we had to do a lot of things for our kids with very little resources. And we have had to secure our buildings with very little money. And then they came out with money, and then we could do what we wanted to to secure our buildings. We also have to give our students the best programming that we can. So I am saying that we are in the advanced placement classes. We also have dual credits, which some of our students had seven, or we had 121 graduating students. We had seven, 10 honors. We had 51 honor students. And we had, we have a lot of kids go on and they had their first and their second year of college done because they took advanced placement. And those, I thought that was very important. If you're placing your kids or sending your kids to college right now, it's about $18,000 to $20,000 a year to put to send your kids to school. So those two, those kids that had that opportunity to pick up those extra classes, extra credits, had one or two years done. And so you're talking about a $40,000 saving. Save. What other improvements?
Thank you. Brandy Wilson, what specifically are you going to do to improve public education in Franklin County?
Well, I have actually been researching a lot and talking with teachers and other educators. So my first conversation was speaking with some of the teachers, and they feel that our school needs to be set on a marketing idea. I don't know how I felt about my child being a marketing tool. But with open enrollment in the state of Indiana and our school corporation losing children to other school corporations, I would like to see us market our school a little bit more. As Mrs. Foster, as I call her that, she used to be my teacher, had stated, we have some great things in our school. We have these advanced classes. My daughter being in one of them, which is going to save me a ton of money. I think these are great, but when you get out into the community, a lot of people don't realize that we have these things right here at our school. The other thing that I would like to see is Batesville actually has a Batesville School Foundation. And it's set up just like the Franklin County Foundation, where businesses and people in our community can donate. And they save money and find ways to raise money for that donation to build the field houses, to do those greater things. East Central actually has just one person they hired to write nothing but grants. And they write grants to help promote and get money back. That's how they were able, one of the ways they were able to buy the back-to-school supplies for all the kids that attended East Central School. Those are the types of things that I would like to see done within our community, is building off of what we have and letting our community know how great we really are.
Thank you. Mary Kett, same question. Do you, what specifically are you going to do to improve public education in Franklin County?
First, I'm going to answer what I've done, even though I have been on school board because this is, as I work at the Pregnancy Health Center, helping young mothers and fathers with their young children and saving, rescuing money from abortion. One thing we've done is I figured we've raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for the school corporation because we've saved many babies in our community and they are now seated and in the classrooms. We promote early childhood. I don't promote, I promote moms taking care of their children in those critical early years where they are raised by secure families and they become secure. And the studies out there show that when children are bussed off early as infants and ones and two-years-old, their security isn't as much and they have a much higher rate of incarceration and drug abuse, et cetera. Not to say that every child who goes to daycare as an infant turns out to be a criminal. I'm not saying that. What I would do for Franklin County, I love reading. I think reading is the absolute foundation, besides a good family life, to education. I don't know what our libraries are like in the schools. I'm going to start finding out. There needs to be good books. There needs to be good literature. There needs to be books that the kids want to read. Teachers need to be reading to their kids so that they learn to love learning. Because learning keeps going. It doesn't stop at age 18.
Thank you. And Kevin Kaiser, next with the same question again. I'll repeat the question. What specifically are you going to do to improve public education in Franklin County?
I think it'd be tough to pick one specific thing to fix, but I think by saying we need to fix our enrollment issue, by fixing that, you're going to fix a lot of the underlying issues that are causing that problem. We've lost 30% of our total enrollment over the last decade, almost a quarter just in our high school. And I realize that's not a problem. That is just something we're going through. Other school corporations are, but ours seems to be a lot worse and we're losing to neighboring school systems. As I said, enrollment is the number one thing to me. I think by bringing up the enrollment, you're going to improve athletics. You're going to have to offer more classes because you will have more students here. Test scores are a big thing that need to be fixed. We are losing the battle on test scores, especially to surrounding schools. Talk about credits that the kids are earning, that's great. I get it. That is great. But we are very high on earning college credits, but our SAT and ACT score are still really low. Even the participation is really low, at 25 to 30%. As far as athletics, we need to fill out, we need more facilities for the kids to be able to use. That's not just our school students, the youth programs. Everybody would use those. That attracts people. So between sports, more facilities, more opportunities, academics, more opportunities, better achievement in those departments. I think that will bring more people back, which is the first step, and then possibly bring more people, new people, into the school corporation.
Terry Bryant, incumbent, what have you specifically found that you're most proud of on your term of board?
Well, this is my first term on the school board. And let me say, it has been a challenge, having been through COVID for the last three years and finally coming out of that and being able to get our kids back in school and in a regular schedule and in a regular setting without having to worry about the masks and the vaccinations and everything that took place there. We found out that the online was not as good for our students and that the best possible place for them to be was in their desks, in their schoolrooms, interacting with the teachers and with other students. And I agree with Kevin about the numbers. We have struggled the last few years to keep our students. Kevin and I watched the volleyball game the other night where one of the young ladies playing against us was a Franklin County girl, and she was playing for another school. We've lost kids who go to play basketball, who go to swim on swim teams. And we need to improve our facilities, like Kevin said, to keep those kids here. Also, education. We have, I have spoken to this, this to the superintendent several times. Again, we have to provide the best basic education for our kids without worrying about critical race theory and the other peripherals that are a big item to city schools and suburban schools. And we have to provide the type of education that Franklin County parents want. And I just want to continue to help do that.
All right, Adrienne Green, same question. What specifically are you going to do to improve public education in Franklin County?
Well, I think I've been able to kind of jot down two things that I know for sure are on my heart. And one is that, you know, the school board is a gatekeeper role. It's, it does many things, but it's also a gatekeeper. And it's important with what our students have been through in the last few years, that they feel safe. That I would be interested in keeping, for example, gender-bent bathrooms out of our schools. The agendas of the left, the CRT, the rewriting of our American history that's taking place in a lot of our urban schools. I want to make sure, I'm interested in academics. There are two types of pastors in the world. I do pastor two churches as my day gig, if you will. But as a conservative Christian patriot that I am, I'm interested in the teaching end. I'm a teaching pastor, that they are getting curriculum and materials in our schools across the board that are true, that are not bent on agendas that are political and awful for our kids, that they feel safe, safe from the narratives and agendas and things coming down from the world, from the federal government. And the last thing is that I do have a handle on administrative roles, the administrative side, the spreadsheets, the numbers, the things that go into being a good facilitator of administration and making sure our students are taught the highest quality of materials. I'm going to go over that again because that's really important to me. But that they are having the opportunities, funding, budgets, that the monies are being spent in a way that's actually blessing the students and not blessing personal agendas or other things that are coming into the world right now against the schools, against the families in our area.
Thank you. Perfectly covered. And one more, Scott McDonough. Basically the same question, but you've been in other government posts. What have you specifically done in your other government positions to help improve education in Franklin County thus far?
All right. Well, one thing I've done is I've been able to work with other public officials in the school board for providing funding for the security resource officers that allow the teachers in the facility and the students to carry about their business with a greater degree of safety. I've worked with, from the redevelopment board point of view, we have funded different projects that the schools requested. And as far as what I would continue to do is I'd continue to use those connections and budget-making abilities and funding abilities. I'd bring those to the table and continue to seek new resources for us to be able to use. And I would also, I'd bring my ability to build consensus, reach out, listen to people, and have conversations and try to figure out what's going to be the best path to improving the education in the county. There are a lot of challenges ahead of us and a lot of it's going to be, we'll make a lot faster headway if we can find some harmony and have discussions. lot faster headway if we can find some harmony and have discussions and sit down and come to agreements and not just fight with each other. So that is what I would have done and would continue to work towards for this county and the school and the children that are in it.
Thank you. And another five questions and then we'll see if we have one in the audience that would like to pose a question and so we can get about that. For our second question, the current school board, of which we have two members here tonight, has preliminarily determined to issue up to $2 million in bonds to fund renovation improvements to school facilities, including site improvements and purchase of equipment. Is this needed? And if so, why? First, we'll start with incumbent, Beth Foster.
Okay, first of all, with the bonds, it's a very, very, very difficult situation to understand the money in public education. And one of the reasons is, is if you don't keep some debt on the books, then you will not get money that you are approved to get. And I don't know if I can tell you in two minutes how that works. Misa's back there, she's shaking her head, and it's just a very difficult situation. We now have applied and gotten some money that we are going to use to pay ourselves back on some of the projects that we have done. And that is coming from the state and the federal government so that we can pay ourselves back over the money that we have used. So like I said, we're in much better financial shape right now. The legislature has given out some COVID money, we've gotten some other money. I too am concerned about people and our enrollment. That is all over the United States, enrollment. The people that are leaving our county and going to other counties. The DOA, Department of Education, has opened that door and so has the IHSA opened that door. A lot of people we had leave because they were living down by Drosborough and over there. Guys, that's five, seven minutes from East Central. Why wouldn't you do that? Same way with Lawrenceburg. Lawrenceburg people, the East Central people that live at the bottom of the hill of Lawrenceburg, they went to Lawrenceburg. Lawrenceburg has money down there. I'm just saying, it's not everything that you're saying, seeing.
Thank you. And our next note will be Brittany Wilson with the same question. Was this $2 million in bonds needed? If so, why? And will more debt need to be taken on in the next term if the school really need to be?
I do understand that our school was in some debt. I don't agree with proposing any more and I would not vote for that. The reason that I said is like my question previously, I feel that there are other options out there. Plus, I guess part of my heart is with the people who are elderly in our community and are retired. My parents just recently retired. And if we continue to propose debt upon our citizens and our older generations, more seasoned generations, they live on a budget and I don't think that's fair to them. I know that it sounds kind of silly, but everything has gone up in price. And for some people, that's a meal. For some families who may have five, six kids, that may be a meal for those children. So I believe that we need to look at the other opportunities such as not the paid-half-back grants, I'm talking about the real grants out there and other ways to help our community and help our debt within our school. And I'm willing to do that.
Thank you. Mary Keck, bond issue necessary? If so, why?
I am not well-versed in this bond issue. I don't know how much it would cost the taxpayer.
There is no cost.
There is no cost according to the school board member here. So, and we're talking about the need for improved buildings, et cetera, athletics, et cetera. So I would support, it's not gonna be costing, how does that work? I have a lot to learn. But the thing about me is, I will research. I will, I will do what I need to do. I'll be up till five o'clock in the morning. I've been known to do that. I'll stick to my guns and I will do what I can to help Franklin County schools be the best they can.
Thank you. Kevin Kaiser, bonds issued, new thoughts on this last round and will more be necessary for sure?
A couple brought up the budget and the ability to be fiscally responsible. You know, if, we've had trouble over the past eight years or four years or two years with COVID. If this is the case, it's defunding from the state and everybody is facing that, yet other school corporations are making it. I spoke with a friend of mine who is a school board president in another area and his first question is, if we are needing to do things such as a solar field and take facilities away just to save some pennies over the next twenty-five to thirty years, then are we really, are we exhausting all avenues of funding, matching funding, grants? We need to make sure that we're doing everything we can. If the state is essentially throwing money because of COVID or whatever reason, we need to take advantage of that. We need to use it. I'm okay with the bond, as it was presented, it does not raise taxes. I understand the debt side of it. If a budget is available, you need to use it, et cetera. But I think if we are going to do it, we need to use it to improve and enhance and grow our facilities, not make a lateral move and fix something that's just a Band-Aid or not going to, again, help us grow to attract more people. Again, you know, if we're going, I don't see how taking facilities away is going to help us grow. We need to use that to grow our facilities, be it academically or athletically.
Next, Terry Bryant, did you vote in majority with that? Or if so, why is that necessary? Explain a little bit to those of us who are inside the board.
Actually, I voted no. Well, we'll be back up. A couple years ago, we passed a bond issue for $5 million. That $5 million is still in the bank. We're using the interest off that to help pay bills. We have been in financial problems for several years now. We have another financial problem. The chiller at the high school that cools our building is thirty years old. It's on its last legs, it's being held together with duct tape and whatever. If it had gone out, we would have been forced to close our school to get it fixed. And now we have, we're facing a bill of almost $500,000. In order to come up with that money, we're going to have to pass another bond issue, which again, will not raise taxes, is based on the assessed value of the property, the school's property and the property of the county. And when it comes to the football field and the solar, our solar, the astroturf, again, we, the school board voted to build a solar field on an area that is part of our Caribbean land behind the junior high where the town and many other people would use it for soccer and other events. And now that has caused us to have to put in turf in the high school so that we can have football and soccer and other events on that football field because it will not hold up to.
Thank you. Adrian Green, similar question. The recent bond issue necessary and will more be in your first term of your life?
Well, I'm getting an education from the existing board members. I have not been on the school board yet and the bond issue is new to me. I did some research on this and was in favor of the turf, artificial turf. I did more research than what the Franklin County Observer newspaper allowed me to do. And so I finally learned that it is a needed thing, but it's new information that the reason we need the turf is because it needs to be a soccer field and a football field. I think anytime the school is misutilizing property, that's a bad idea. Solar panels are built and made and best on a roof. I understand the roof is in poor condition. Let's figure out how to fix the roof, put the solar panels on the roof where they belong and keep our soccer field. I think we can shuffle around priorities and monies if we had some fresh eyes at some of these budgets and spreadsheets and reasons on the school board to maybe do better with what we do have. I understand this is tough times, there are few resources here financially to work with. But sports is very, very important to drawing people to Franklin County, to drawing people to these schools. Everybody's kids are in sports. I think it's important that we have the turf, but not for the reason of the soccer field. Soccer field land needs to be saved as a valuable asset to the company, to the company, to the school corporation. I mean, it's, it's critical value now, prices on land are sky-high. This is an asset that we need. To eat that up with solar panels is not wise, in my mind. I don't know everything. I'm learning as I go. Would like the chance to do more.
Thank you. Scott McDunne, if you could tell us your thoughts on matters regarding bond issue and budget in the future?
I would say my position on funding is I'm very much in favor of maintaining the current funding that is there. I think what our focus needs to be on is how do we utilize the funds that are there to the best of our abilities? What's gonna give us the biggest bang for our buck at the end of the day? So as far as bonds in general, like I said, I would not be in favor of doing anything that would increase the taxes, but we very much need to keep the funds that are available available to us and look for how we can build a better future for the kids and the rest of us out of that.
Thank you. Thank you all for the both rounds of questions. And we'd like, at this time, to open it up to the public. If anybody is president, who would like to make their way down to the center microphone there and ask a question, we can direct it to one person or we can do a speed round and go it off the table and have each one to answer in short word. Anyone interested in doing that? Don't all mob up there at once, please. We're getting a whole party tonight. Closing statements at this time. If, Mr. Patterson?
So you guys can just give me a quick, short answer. We have Mount Carmel Elementary and Laurel Elementary. Recently, we've consolidated the junior high schools into the Brookfield Elementary. Do you guys support closing in the future if financial concerns continue where they are? Do you support closing Mount Carmel or Laurel? If so, please tell me why. If not, tell me how you think you might fix the issue.
If we could just maybe go down the table, we'll start at this end with Mr. Bryant. Just go right down the line. If you can keep it to, if you can pass the mic on down there so everybody can hear you should go. They'll turn it up as you use it.
One reason why I wanted to be on the school board was to try to make sure that all of our schools stay open. Our county is too big. Our transportation and highways, many times you can't get there from here. I am opposed to putting young kids on buses to ship them to Brookfield several hours a day when the best place for them is in a, in a small school setting on each end of our county. And so that would be one of the very, very last things that I would ever consider doing. In talking to the superintendent, I found out today that we didn't lose any kids this year, that while our enrollment is up, and basically it's up in the Mount Carmel and Laurel areas. We have a great kindergarten that also is enrolled in Brookfield Elementary. And so, yes, we've lost kids in the high school and the junior high, but our elementaries throughout the county have held and grown and we need to continue to do that and we need to foster that education throughout the county and keep our schools open.
So that was a no. Thank you.
I do not want to close any of the schools. Again, I go back to, I think we need to be more proactive, well, at this point, it's reactive, to get the kids back. That's great news if the enrollment is up, those official numbers aren't out or I don't have them yet. Based, Monday, based on last year, we were, we were down 297, or no, I'm sorry, that was transfers. But we need to figure out, if students did come back, why did they come back? And I think that is, that was a major issue or something that stuck with me in one of the prior board meetings. The question was posed, why are people leaving? And nobody really knew the answer. And when it was asked, well, are we asking those people, why are they going to other schools? It was, they said, no, we don't, we don't think they will tell us anyway, so we just don't ask. And what, how the response sounded, that's not solving the problem. Again, no, we don't want to close schools. The consolidation, everyone's concern when that happened was it would cut down on activities and we are now seeing it here recently with some sports teams being cut out at that level. That should not happen. That is not how you grow. So going back to facilities, we have those schools and facilities, but I don't think we utilize them as best we can, especially for sports. But bottom line, no. We know, I would hope nobody on this board wants to close this school. So that's what we need to figure out is how to not do it. You know, without, again, understanding why people are leaving or why they're coming back at this point, if they are, we're never gonna solve that problem. We need to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Is it on? Hello? Oh, I'm sorry. It did something. No, I went to Mount Carmel School in the eighth grade and my two younger brothers all went there. I, after the same reasons that Joe was talking about, we need those schools. No, I don't want to close them. However, if the enrollment bottoms out, there is no choice. If no one's attending those schools, why are they, why are families leaving? Why are they not coming to school or whatever? Because in the newspapers, Franklin County is the bedroom community of Cincinnati. They can still buy land up here, they can still get away from the COVID-infested cities. And so we don't have a problem with people moving here. We have a problem with people coming upon the school. Why are they coming upon the school? Because they, gatekeepers are letting critical race theory come in, gender-bent bathrooms, rewriting American history, the rumination of education is happening in schools. So they're homeschooling, they're going to charters. My mother, Shirley Green, was the principal of two chartered Christian schools. I know all about charter schools, why they're blooming right now. Because public school education is a disaster and we need to fix it in terms of certain key areas that a simple school board that had a vision for quality education and the protection of a student would fix.
I, I don't know what happened for a second. I would definitely not close schools. Our Laurel and Elementary, and I guess I'm probably more familiar with Laurel because I attended Metamor Church of God, our bus routes run that route. And I can tell you via Facebook and those kids, that principal is in And I can tell you via Facebook and those kids, that principal is an encourager. She has decorated that school, and I want to go to school there. It looks like just such a great place, and it's the atmosphere that she has created. And I think if we can create that positive atmosphere, and I do, you know, I do agree, public education has kind of allowed some crazy stuff in that I don't personally agree with, nor do I want my child to learn. But we have to build our school up. If you get on social media, you can see everyone tear our school down. We all know what the problem is. We all want to, well, I want to fix the problem. I can't speak for everyone else. But I will say this, in all of this, I prayed about this, and God gave me just these words. Jesus was not sent to condemn the world, but to save the world. How did he do that? He went and he encouraged people. He taught them. And I believe our school needs that same theory behind it. We need to encourage people to come back. We need to make our special education program. We lose a lot of kids to East Central and Batesville in special education. And I don't know if everyone's aware, but that's a lot of money. So we need to look at our special education programs as well. Yes, sports is a big thing, but so is special education because of the amount of funding that schools get for those kids. And I also have ways and research that I've done on that as well. But no, I wouldn't close any schools.
Thank you.
All right. I have, I would not be in favor of closing any of the schools. All six of my kids have gone to Mount Carmel. I see tremendous benefits in maintaining the schools we have and looking for ways to improve them. That's what our focus needs to be on. As far as ways to solve the problem, that's what it's going to take to solve the problem is figuring out how to rebrand us in order to make our facilities and our classes and education attractive to other students. You know, we need to, we need the county to continue to grow. We need more people have six kids. That's a good, long-term solution there. So I'm very much in favor of keeping the schools we have and would not vote in favor of closing any of them or consolidating them.
Thank you.
I, I confirm that. Have more kids, it's the answer. Don't give us, oh, and Brandy, I also like what you said. No, I wouldn't close schools. Loco, loco, loco is the best. But I do believe coming out of this insanity of the way that our government handled the COVID virus, it's affected all of us. It's affected each and every one of us. We have been living under a cloud, and I think we need to have more hope coming out of this for the future, for the future of our own lives, our families, our children, our schools, the school board. Everyone just needs to have more hope, and I know where to get hope. Brandy knows where to get hope. And that's through, you know, many of you do. Seek the truth, seek wisdom, seek goodness, and who has all those, the best of those attributes, and that's Almighty God. And this is a Christian community, and we don't have to shriek, shirk from talking about that because that is the source of where we will find answers. And God has answers, so we just need to have more hope and trust in Him and seek Him.
Thank you.
Okay, first of all, no, we're not gonna, I don't want to close any of the schools. My daughter taught 11 years at Mount Carmel. She loved that school. The families are wonderful out there, just as they are at Laurel. They have more of a family-orientated school. Everyone knows everyone. No, we have to keep the, and I would say the smaller kids, K through six, or even pre-K through six, they have, it's good to keep them home. We don't want to put them on the bus. Secondly, people are saying about our enrollment, yes, our enrollment has improved, two years in a row now, two years in a row. We are 28 short this year. Those 28, probably half of them were expelled. They were put into the court system. They were taken away from parents. So it's not that they're going somewhere else. Now, there are people that are going somewhere else. They are going somewhere else because, example, East Central has a brand-new field house. They have a brand-new pool. They just got $50 million. Our tax rate in Franklin County is not anywhere close to Dearborn County. We have to stay up to date. We have to have turf field to keep our students here. This is bigger and better for the soccer people. This is, the soccer people are going to be playing under the lights. They're going to be the big people on the court, on the night. This is where they will want to be. Also, it will be a schedule nightmare, but you know what? It's going to be wonderful, wonderful for the kids. There's not very many fields that our kids from Franklin County go and play on grass fields. They go and play on turf. I think, I think the football field coach said that he would only be playing on two grass fields this year.
All right. Anybody else have a question for our school board candidates here? Yeah. Well, one question, so you want to hear, rather than, if you just want to give a syllable, what are your opinions? We want to hear them, so ask a question. Good.
End with a question mark.
All right, a question mark. Why did you all come here and run? I just appreciate y'all, you guys too, for being able to step up and serve the community. And this room should be full. I'm really disappointed.
Amen.
That's just all I want to say. So that's part of our problem with government is nobody cares.
Thank you, Roger.
You're right.
All right, so I guess a speed round maybe. Why did you run? I don't know, we want to do a full two minutes on this. Anything, can you give us like 30 seconds on that? Each person go down the line, and we can start at the other end. You know, we'll let Beth go first maybe down there. Beth, all right, she's got the mic.
Okay. Why would I run? Well, I think I touched on this a little bit before. I feel education is the gateway into a productive life, and I feel that we must prepare our students for college and career choices. Career and vocational and career, hands-on jobs are very, very important. We need plumbers, we need builders, we need electricians, we need all these people, and we are encouraging these kids, and we do have a lot going to vocational school.
Thank you.
Jeez, oh, jeez. I think I answered that question to the opening statement. Yeah, the term gatekeeper has come up a lot, and I feel compelled by God to make a difference and to make our schools better and make our children safe and well-educated, so.
Thank you.
I'd say I am running and decided to run because I do have six kids in the school, and I want, I want them to have the best education possible, and I want that for every other child in that school or in all our schools to have the opportunity to learn. Someone said, learn how to learn. I always tell my kids that there's nothing better you can come out of school with than knowing how to learn. There's an infinite amount of knowledge in this world, and if you know how to go and look it up, especially with all the resources and technology we have these days, there's nothing stopping you.
Thank you.
So I decided to run for multiple reasons, a little bit of what Mrs. Foster said, and Mary said, and Scott said. You know, my heart, I love kids. I think education is super important. I love our community. I want everyone to get a good education. Most of all, I love parents. I love teachers. I have my bachelor's degree, by the way, in elementary education. I didn't mention that earlier. And I taught for multiple years in Union County, so it's important to me.
Thank you.
And I love you all.
I am ready because I devoted my life to trying to make a difference in the world in any way that I'm designed to do, and I've been given certain skills and talents and opportunities to devote to that service. And so if it's part of my life path to be on a school board in Franklin County, my alma mater, I want to be there and make a difference.
As I said earlier, I have one child who's a sophomore and one is a kindergartner. I've basically been through this with one kid all the way through, and I'm starting over. So I've seen the things that I like and don't like. I've, you know, been involved, and I feel like I've gone down every avenue that I can to try to help and fix things. This is the next step. I realize I'm only one voice, but it has to start there. I am one of, one of the entire group, so.
My entire life has been about education. I have been in your community for over 50 years. I've taught 30, 45, 43 years. I have interacted with kids my entire life. I felt like I had something else to give to the community after I retired, and that is being on the school board and trying to get the best education possible for your kids.
Thank you. Any other members of the public would like to pose a question for our school board candidates? If anyone would go ahead and ask one, then if not, I'm not seeing anybody getting up right into the mic. What is, we'll do another speed round on this. We'll call it 30 seconds. I guess we can start down here at this end. We're just kind of going back and forth at this point. What is one area where you feel that the Franklin County schools could cut the budget or that you're wanting to explore that possibility? Not saying that you definitely would, but the same question to everyone. If you just want to give us 30 seconds on that. The top. Lucky Terry gets to go first.
Lucky Terry. There, there, there's just, it's too complicated. There, there are too many, too many considerations. I mean, with your sports, with your books, with, with the Chromebooks, with your teachers who, we're losing teachers because we can't pay them enough, and we have funds that we can't get, and we want to make improvements.
Thank you.
I don't know that I would look at it as cutting anything. I think as with anything, it needs to be gone through and make sure we're not wasting anything where it doesn't need to be spent. I realize that that's probably done every year, but fresh eyes are always a good thing. Nobody wants, I don't want to take money or budgeting away from anybody, so just want to make sure that we're using everything to the best of our ability and what is best for everyone at this school.
Terry, I apologize. I called you Joe. I've got an uncle named Joe Bryant. I'm sorry. I don't know if this is in the budget yet, the solar panels. Now, I'm, I'm big on solar panels. My brother, I just came back from California. My brother's out there. He has no electric bill because they have solar panels. But if, if solar panels are becoming a problem in terms of installation and money, I don't know if we need that in the budget. I think we could use that money somewhere else. And the solar panel thing, this partnership with the Green New Deal thing, partnership with the ESG thing with the bank, we don't need to get into that. We need to focus our money on the education.
I would probably look at it, budgets are hard. I sit on the budget committee, committee, everybody won't help us. The budgets are difficult. I would look at wasteful spending. I know for myself, I hear a lot of people complain about transportation, five kids being on a bus going here and there. So if I were to look at more wasteful spending, it would probably be within the transportation at Franklin County School Corporation, just to see if we could save money on gas for buses and how we could maybe exclude some of the, or not exclude routes, but
Thank you.
build off of them to run one, I guess.
I would say as far as cutting budgets go, budgets are complicated. I mean, we do it every, on Senate County Council, that's what we do. We crunch budgets. We go through and we look for, and it's not so much that we're cutting because we're trying to get rid of a certain department, it's that we want to make sure everybody's using their resources to the fullest extent and then shifting those funds to where we can get a bigger bang for a buck and improve things. So I'm not interested in cutting the overall amount of spending. I'm interested in shifting it around to make sure we're providing our kids with the biggest benefit possible.
Well, since I have been on the school board and I have been to many meetings, one this past year, I really don't know where the waste is. So yeah, the waste would, I don't know if anything is being wasted. The panels, I think they're a done deal, aren't they?
Not necessarily.
Oh, they're not a done deal. I would definitely look at that. I don't know where that's all coming from. Supposedly, they're supposed to be in the ground or on the ground by December 31st in order for Franklin County School Corporation to reap the money that whatever excess energy...
Thank you.
They have to be in the ground by December 31st, on the ground.
Okay. I can say the, not wasting money, but we have looked at the transportation this year, and we have made great strides in that. We have cut one corporation bus. We've cut another AM, PM bus. That was a 72-passenger bus. We cut one vocational bus going to Connersville every day. We have cut a Laurel AM bus. We have also had the town buses. They are...
Thank you. And I think it kind of probably off, but you were by the same amount of time. Appreciate that. So does anybody else have a question for our panel leaders this morning, our candidates? Appreciate y'all being here and not even giving up for a question and learning a little about the candidates and maybe informing your decision for already next month at the ballot box. Before we conclude tonight, we do have closing statements, which you will each be given two minutes to complete that, and we're going to do it in reverse order because the opening statements, and Scott McDonough, if you would mind, one for a second.
I would, I would just like to say that if I am elected to this position, I will certainly do my best to serve everyone within the county to provide the best education we can. And I would be happy to use all the, all my past experiences and knowledge of budgets and building coalitions and consensuses towards policies that's going to benefit everybody. I'll seek to promote as much harmony as I can in the school board meetings and seek solutions when people feel like there's a negative impact on any new policies. It's, there's so much involved in the school board, it's hard to wrap it all up in one thing, so I'll leave it at that. I will, I will do my best if elected.
Thank you. Next, Adrian Green.
Well, in my position and my current vocation, I am, I am not afraid to stand up against big government and against cultural trends that are harming our children. I think that's, that's a really important commodity today, to have courage in what you're doing and working with a team, especially in a governance role over kids. That said, and this thing may seem like a silly thing to some of you, but to me, I think it would cover a lot of, a lot of things and tick a lot of boxes. I'd like to restore prayer in our schools. Our alignment with the federal government's bizarre mandates on things like prayer is just ridiculous. If children and teachers want to exercise their faith in a given situation with the way the world is right now, with what everyone's been through and going through, it's very confusing for our students, this world, it's very unsafe to our students, they need to be able to pray if they want to. And atheism is a religion, by the way. It's a non-conformist worship of the self. So there's room for the atheists too. They don't want to pray, they don't have to pray. But I think prayer in schools, a simple thing like that, could change a whole lot of things when we're involving Almighty God in what we're doing, and we need help. And why not? And that's why.
I'd like to say that it's been a privilege to have been a teacher in Franklin County schools. I've dedicated my career to it. I feel like I've... I feel like I still have something to contribute. I've been with your, your kids and students all these years and I want to provide the best education possible. I agree with many of the statements about the CRT and the other things going on that we want to keep out of our community and we don't want to expose our kids to, but by the same token, we must give them the best education possible, whether that be prep for college or hands-on. I was a government teacher, a history teacher, a shop teacher, and one reason why I went back to college to learn to be a shop teacher was because some students weren't quote students, some students were hands-on and I wanted to give them a chance to succeed with something that was their skill. And I, like I said, I feel like I have a lot of experience in our schools. I know how they work. I go into the schools, I go talk to the teachers and support staff, I talk to the bus drivers, I go to the sporting events so that I can make the best decision possible when it comes to making the vote to, you know, to help our schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin Kaiser.
Luckily, we're closing at the top, so don't get confused. The majority of the current administration's been in place for a long time, looking at test scores, enrollment trend, even the lack of just a winning attitude in both academics and sports. I think it's time for a fresh set of eyes and ideas. Again, shrinking enrollment has been a trend for the last decade plus, closing schools, the fact that we're even having that conversation, I believe is a reflection of the administration. Keeping on the same track that we're on is not the best path forward unless we want the state to come in and take over and we are skating very thin to that happening. Do we want to lose our small-town atmosphere and values to the bureaucratic ideas of Indianapolis? We're on the backside of the pandemic and that has put us at a very important fork in the road, I think. Open enrollment is creating competition amongst the schools. We have to compete. What, what are we selling? How are we selling ourselves, our, to families? The lake, the town, values, academics, sports? What are we doing? What do we need to do? So do we continue down the path that has been put in place or do you want me to help us get back on the right track moving forward, regaining that competitive attitude to get this school and our children's futures headed in the right direction? The directions that we as parents of this school and community should be helping guide them toward. Closing, thank you to Oak Forest, WRBI, Brent, Nisa, all the candidates, anyone else that was involved in getting this together. I thought it was a great idea when we, when it came out, so thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kay.
Yes, thank you, Oak Forest and everyone who got this together and it's a great panel of candidates. I'm really impressed. So I think the future of Franklin County School District looks really good. A lot of hard work ahead of us as far as prayer in school. The separation of church and state does not prevent that. It actually encourages that. It protects Christians and other faiths to practice their religion. Thomas Jefferson, in a letter to the Danbury Baptist Church, who wrote to them in 1801, was very concerned that their rights to practice their faith were going to be taken away from them because of the wording of the First Amendment in the Constitution. Thomas Jefferson wrote back a three-paragraph letter that simply said, no, 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 you are protected. There is a wall of separation between the church and the state. The state cannot stop you from practicing your religion. That whole letter in its context was used throughout until 1947 in the United States Supreme Court. The meaning was there. Until 1947, a United States Supreme Court's decision, used only those words. Separation of, separation of church and state. Now you hear it all over the place, like we can't practice our faith. No, it's a lie. It's part of communism. Communism is taking over this country. We have to open our eyes. Atheism is here. Communism is here. Socialism is here. It has infiltrated our, the public school system, our churches, everything, academia, Hollywood, everywhere. And we do need very gatekeepers.
Thank you. Brandy Wilson.
Oh, sorry. In closing, I would like to thank everyone for being here. I would definitely like to thank Oak Forest Church and God bless you all for coming and being here and caring about our school. In all reality, I just want to be a real approachable, honest, respectful candidate, representative for school board. So if you vote for me, I promise that I will listen to your concerns as a parent. I am a parent. I've had concerns and I've been to the school board with my concerns and I know what it feels like not always to have them addressed right away, especially when you're in a very hurtful situation. So I, I do, I promise to listen and acknowledge and be a caring person and to stand up for what is right, for what is just and not allow foolishness and nonsense to invade our schools and infect our children with things that they do not need to know about or hear about. And I, I love our community, so I hope you will vote for me November 8th for school board.
All right, and one more, Beth Foster.
I can only mention that I do have three grandchildren in the system. Two of whom are at St. Michael's, that is in our system, but three are, I have a freshman this year, my grandson. The others are in the junior high. I also, in our education, I think Kevin Downey has mentioned many times that our test scores need to be raised. We know that. We have done everything that we can possibly do and keep improving on those test scores. And the PSAT and SATs are coming around very shortly. Also on the field house, people say we didn't think about that. I spent an hour with an architect that night and the board just, the board, we did not have the board's consent on that, so we'll try next time again. We just completed our contacts with our teachers, which we're going to even out some money with our teachers. That will be next week. And also in our education process, we have got to do as much as we can do with our children. When I'm reelected to the school board, I will continue to be a committed member of the board. I will work for the betterment of our children of this community and seize every opportunity the children deserve. Thank you for your time and your attention. I hope I can count on your vote at the upcoming election on November 8th, 22. Thank you to all that's been here and to the church and thank you for all sitting up here.
All right, can we hear for all of our candidates who were here today? We appreciate you coming on and we appreciate all of you coming out to watch and being informed voters and caring about the cornerstone of our democracy. Brent Lee from W103.9 WRBI. We appreciate you listening to us and checking out our website and relying on us as hopefully a credible source of information and we thank you for keeping us in business as well. So thank you. Have a good one.